Thank you. I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for December 11th, 2023. Thank you for being here. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Counselors, in your packet tonight, you have several minutes and notes. We have the study session notes from November 6th, 2023, city council meeting minutes for November 13th, 2023, study session notes from November 20th, 2023, and city council meeting minutes of November 27th, 2023. Are there any changes to be noted in the minutes? Seeing none, minutes stand approved with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to the agenda? None noted, we will proceed with the agenda as published. We have several. Great night for presentations and awards, so I'm going to go to the podium right now and we'll kick it off. We're really pleased tonight to have a recognition for our Wheat Ridge 102 graduates. So the mayor, that's me, and the city council of Wheat Ridge would like to formally recognize and appreciate the participants in the 2023 Wheat Ridge 102 program who have dedicated themselves and immersed in immersive portion of their, an immense portion of their time this fall to creating two new programs for the city that will help address community needs. Wheat Ridge 102 is a new program of partnership with local works that grew out of Wheat Ridge 101, an interactive program designed to educate the community about how Wheat Ridge works. The Wheat Ridge 102 program builds on the skills learned at Wheat Ridge 101 and allows participants to go through the process of facilitating a needed change in our community. This year, the two projects included implementation of a green business program and a snow removal assistance program. Both groups worked hard completing research, writing a project blueprint, presenting to their projects to city council last week. We are very grateful to everyone who volunteered their limited free time by investing in this knowledge base for the city of Wheat Ridge. The participants who successfully completed the 2023 Wheat Ridge 102 program, and when I read your name, if you please come forward, Bob Brassel, Clint Carlson, Sandra Davis, Melanie Mascarenas, Pat Quinn, Jennifer Wabisiak, and Daniel Williams. So these are, these are our graduates. Great to see everybody. You get a little goodies. Thank you again to all of the participants for your interest in the city of Wheat Ridge. We hope that you continue to stay engaged in our community. Mary Ann would like to say a few words? No? Okay, well, I can't compel, I can't compel speech, but, but do say something.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank everyone. This program takes a lot of time and effort from, from our interested residents. Each time it takes a few months, usually it runs September through December, so we know it takes a lot of time and energy of our folks, and they really spend a lot to try to make Wheat Ridge a better place. So we're really grateful for the time they put in, and we're really excited to see where these programs take off.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. We need to go sit down. Thank you so much. Thanks a lot. Great job. We're going to get some photos?
Yeah.
Get in front of the council. The council, council people really like the publicists. I'd like to invite Chief Murtha to join me here at the podium. Chief, come on up. How are you doing tonight?
Good.
We've got some new recruits here today, and without further ado, this is our police chief, Chris Murtha. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, again, I'm before you to introduce the next class of Wheat Ridge police officers. These men have decided to endeavor in this career to take a greater share of responsibility for this community. I think it's important that they get to meet the folks in council and the mayor, and tonight they're going to do a quick introduction. I know it's a busy schedule, but I think this is a great moment. Gentlemen, come on up here. There are seven, so it's an unusually large class for us, but they are still exceptional people, all, each and every one of them. We don't let our standards down for anything. So tonight, I'm going to give you a, they're going to give you a quick intro into who they are, and then we'll be out of your hair, and we're going to see how they do with public speaking tonight, okay?
Go ahead, Andrew. All right, definitely not the best of public speaking, bud. Go ahead. I'm Andrew Cherry. I grew up here in the Wheat Ridge Lakewood area. After graduating high school, from Lakewood High School, I went to the Army and spent seven years there as a military police officer. After getting out of the Army, I wanted to continue a career in law enforcement and come back to Colorado, so ended up coming back to Wheat Ridge, and I'm happy to be here and serve the community.
Thank you.
Same as Cherry, I'm not really good at public speaking. There we go. Originally from the Republic of Panama, came in Colorado back in two, early 2000. After that, after high school, enlisted in the Navy, did six years, went to the reserves. After that, worked in Limer County Sheriff's Office and was actually present to have the opportunity to work here, so I'm actually glad you guys took me on, so thank you for the opportunity. I'm really glad for it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Oakesley Alama. I'm originally from Denver, Colorado, 24 years old. After I graduated high school, I also enlisted in the United States Army. I was a military police officer there as well for five years. Once I got out of the Army, I applied to the city of Wheat Ridge to be a police officer, and I'm happy that you guys were so willing to accept me, so thank you.
Hello, my name's Mario Sandoval. Born and raised here in Denver, Colorado. Grew up around here. The past five years, I was doing EMS for a larger agency. Really didn't like that because you were just busy going to call to call, really not engaging to the community, and that was one of the main reasons why I chose Wheat Ridge because of how small it is and how, how much you could interact with the community.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Dalton Corbett. I'm originally from South Bend, Indiana. I come from a background about nine and a half years of fire and EMS, four and a half years in Indiana, four and a half years out here. For about a decade of that, I realized I'd try something different and wanted to go the police route, still want to help the community. I like the smaller, tight knit areas, that's why I chose Wheat Ridge. Everybody knows everybody, and I like that a lot about this place, but thank you for taking me.
Hello, I'm Officer Gonzalez, originally from Arizona, born and raised here in this beautiful state. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, got that from the University of Arizona, Fairdown. I come from the oil field. Before that, I was a case manager, and I also did security. I'm grateful for the opportunity. Thanks, guys.
Good evening. My name's Joshua Retschlog. I was born Detroit, Michigan. I joined the military when I was 18. I did that for about 13 years as a military police officer. After that, my girlfriend actually moved to Colorado, and I followed her. We lived in Longmount for three years, and we moved to Thornton, but then after that, I got COVID orders for the guard. Did that for about two years, and then started applying and realized I wanted to do something different, and thankfully Wheat Ridge took me on, and I'm very grateful and honored to serve the community here. Thank you.
That's your seven, and I just want to say that for those fire EMS folks who joined us from that side, we always say it's nice to turn in your pillow for a badge. You do the real work here. Sorry if I offended anybody in the audience. If you want, we'd like to take a picture right in front of council and out of your hair.
Absolutely. March them up there.
I'd like to invite Counselor Hoppy to join me at the podium. I need some help on all of this. We're really excited tonight to recognize Wheat Ridge High School, the varsity boys' soccer team for their success this year. The soccer team are back-to-back JFCO League champions, and I think that's a great, a great thing to happen. Led by Nate Crainer, who has, who has been in a support role in the team for the last three years, and this year took over the program as head coach. I've been told that we have a fifth-generation farmer on the team also. I'd like to introduce the head coach, Nick Crainer. Nick, would you come down to the podium and introduce your coaching staff and the achievements of your soccer team? We're really pleased to have everybody here today, so.
Well, when we come, we like to pack the house out. Only have standing room for everybody back here. All right, I've got a few things to go through, and so I just want to make sure we make our time nice and succinct for you guys, and also recognize these guys for all of their achievements and what they've accomplished this season. So first, I just want to start by saying thank you, Mayor Bud Stalker, for being, allowing us to come in here and to have this recognition. It's a real true honor. I want to thank you, Janice, for working with our athletic director, Jason Campbell, and putting this all together. This is really quite an honor. I also want to thank you, Wheat Ridge City Council, for having us in here today, and we're excited to share these awards with you guys and show you what these guys are all made of. So what a privilege and an honor for all of us to be here today. These boys have worked so hard to achieve these accomplishments, and we are so grateful for the recognition opportunity. I would also like to call up our assistant coach, Kendra Gothard. If you can come on up here, Kendra. Lori. Lori O'Toole, who is also one of our assistant coaches, and many of you guys know him very well. He's sick tonight, so unfortunately, he's unable to attend, but I definitely want to recognize him too. I want to say this is pretty incredible because Lori and Kendra have been around with the program for a long time, and Kendra for a very, very long time. And I just really want to recognize their dedication to these boys. Without, I mean, this has been, overall, it's been just an incredible, incredible season, and we could not have done it without them and their dedication to these boys. It has been paramount to these boys' success this year, so I really want to acknowledge that with the assistant coaches. I also need to give a shout out, and first and foremost, to all our parents and Wheat Ridge community. It's such a blessing to be a part of this farmer family. You guys are awesome. A big shout out to the JV team that has also had an amazing season. You guys just crushed it this year, and I'm proud of you guys. I'd also like to say a special thank you to our principal, Lisa Mahanna, our AD, Jason Campbell, and secretary, Amy Sers. I would also like to recognize our JV coaches, Malia Liken and Marcus Martin, our team managers, Cara Jacob and Caree Kroll and Brad Sandler for all their help this year. I'd also like to just give a shout out to my predecessor, Nate Flack, and the amazing program that he has built over the last three years. It's quite incredible. Some really big shoes to come in and fill, and it's just been an honor and pleasure. I'd also, and last but not least, like to give a shout out to my family for all their support. Without all these individuals and their sacrifice, support, and dedication behind the scenes, these boys would not have the tools that they needed to succeed this year. So now to recognize our varsity team and why we are here today. These young men faced so many seamless and insurmountable challenges this year. Right from the start this season, but they also face these challenges head-on and were successful on so many levels. First, I'd like to recognize our two team captains, Chase Kroll and Brian Vera Ruiz. Can you guys come up here, please? Nice dash there, Chase. Some of the boys are unable to be with us tonight. Some of them are out of town. Some of them are in another country, some of them are sick, so we do have a good showing tonight, and I want to go ahead and call them up. Will the rest of the team come up? And can you guys go ahead and actually, I'll have you guys stand, if that's okay, right here in front. Is that okay? I'll have you guys stand right here, just right in front. Asen, come on up. Asher. Ben. Bernard. Brayden. Brian. Ethan. Both are Jacobs. Jason. Jimmy. Liam. Nick. Rowan. Rolando. Both are riders. And Seth. Stack it in deep, guys. We are all thrilled, awed tonight. So many of them to say not enough of time to go through of all, but I do want to recognize some really key points. So we are so proud of these young men and their strong-trunk character, first and foremost. These, there are three areas of achievements to acknowledge this year. First is sportsmanship. We would like to recognize the Wheat Ridge High School soccer program for their first-place Paul Davis Sportsmanship Award. In our opinion, as coaches, this is the most honorable accomplishment that our team can achieve. It's a true testament of their character on and off the field. Congratulations, guys, for your first-place Sportsmanship Award. Second, I'd really like to acknowledge some of the individual successes that these boys have had this season. There were so many individual achievements in school and in all conference. As we are short on time, please wait until I announce all the names at the each, at the end of these categories before we recognize these guys. All-conference academic awards. Honorable mentions, Rolando Ferofino, Bernard Jacob, Ryder Peckham, first team with seven players is a very, and with a very, very high GPA. Most of the guys, actually, I wanted you guys to note, 4.0 and higher. Ben Bizarro, Brian Kratzler, Ethan Crainer, Nick Jackson, Ryder McKay, Seth Hurtel, and then there's Jason Hakim with a 4.55 GPA. Very impressive. Congratulations, you guys, on all your conference academic achievements this year. I want to quickly talk about our Wheat Ridge awards. We had our banquet a few weeks ago, where we were recognizing many of our players for the Wheat Ridge soccer leadership, hard work, and individual skills. The recipients, and I won't go through all the details on it to cut it a little short, but I do want to recognize these guys for these awards. Brayden Bergeren, Brian Kratzler, Chase Kroll, Ethan Crainer, Jacob Harrison, Nick Jackson, Ryder McKay, Ryder Peckham, and Seth Hurtel. Congratulations, guys. There is one award we need to recognize that we were unable to present because our max prep scores were not completely entered at the time. We would also like to recognize our Wheat Ridge Offensive Player of the Year for his top max prep scores. Everyone, please congratulate Bernard Jacob. And now to go through the all-conference. Just so you guys know, all-conference awards are incredibly difficult to achieve, attain, and very prestigious because the league coaches nominate and debate the list of players. Our recipients this year, we had a total of eight, which is incredible. Part of that is due to our league championship, and that helped us get there to have those spots for these guys. Honorable mentions, Chase Kroll and Ryder Peckham. Second team, Jacob Harrison. First team, Bernard Jacob, Seth Hurtel, Brian Vera Ruiz, and Jacob Timms. And in addition, we were able to secure an all-conference Offensive Player of the Year, Jacob Timms. Can we get an applause for all these recipients and their achievements? And last but not least, we would really like to acknowledge the big-team accomplishment that you guys had this year, winning league championship. But it's more than that. These boys and young men of character have back-to-back league champs. Two years in a row is an absolute amazing feat and accomplishment for the Wheat Ridge varsity soccer team. Congratulations, you guys, on your many amazing achievements this year. Well done, guys. Thank you again, Mayor and the city council. We really appreciate this opportunity. Let's get a picture. Can we get a photo? Okay.
Thank you, Coach, and thank you, gentlemen of the soccer club. All I can say is you've, you've brought great pride and joy to our teams, to our, to our city, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the surprise to be able to introduce our other student athletes that are in the room. We have another group of student athletes to recognize and celebrate tonight, the Wheat Ridge Varsity Poms Team. The Poms Team are JFCO League Champions, oh, wait, led by head coach Sidney Harvey and assistant coach Kaylee Hart. This is their second year as a coaching staff for the Poms Team. They're also team alumni from the team that brought home the first-ever state championship in 2016, which I also had the privilege to introduce them to city council that day. We're pleased to welcome you here today to recognize and celebrate your team's achievements. Coach Harvey, Coach Hart, please join me at the podium to introduce your team.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Sidney Harvey. I am the head coach of the Wheat Ridge High School Dance Team. This is my assistant coach, Kaylee Hart. Thank you so much for having us here tonight to celebrate these amazing ladies. Our team is made up of nine dedicated young women, where we practice anywhere between 10 to 15 hours a week while also supporting our football, basketball, soccer, and unified teams at all their home games. Additionally, the girls volunteer at several community events throughout the year. Some of our favorites from this year so far are helping with the Children's Diabetes Foundation and the National Foundation to End Abuse of Children Neglect. There are not enough words to express how proud we are of these exceptional student athletes. These ladies have the longest season of all sports, beginning practice in May and not finishing until March, while always carrying high academic standards. Their dedication, hard work, and professionalism has all paid off by earning the Team Leadership Award, second at USA Regionals, being named JFCO League Champs, and as of this Saturday, Colorado State 4A Palm Runner-Ups. We cannot be more grateful to coach these girls and be a part of the Wheat Ridge community. Thank you so much for having us here tonight to recognize these amazing young ladies. Go Farmers. We'd now like to recognize some of our members that are here tonight, first starting off with Olivia Miller. She has a lot to hold. Next, Giselle Trimble. Casey Merkett. Shane Nguyen. And our captain, Millie Morris. Thank you so much for having us.
I want to thank all of our athletes and their families for joining us tonight. We're really proud of you guys. We hope to see you back here next year, so thanks so much. Okay. All right. We'll move on to the next, the next item on our agenda is the public's right to speak. Members of the public are speaking now in the hallways, you know, so we'll wait until they were able to close the door. Okay, thank you very much. The council opens up its chambers to listen to its citizens as a form in most of our meetings, and we will do so again tonight. Our first speaker in the council chambers is Margaret Robinson. If you'd please come to the podium and introduce yourself. And now you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm Margaret Robinson. I live at 4 Hillside Drive, and I'm going to be talking about extreme weather and homelessness. But I want to start by commending our City Council for approving the rezoning at 44th and Wadsworth for the Affordable Housing Project, also for putting aside or giving money to the Mental Health Center. That's just really a great contribution and greatly needed by our city. So, last December 2022, Jefferson County experienced several days of extreme weather. Although at present, the county has not specified what constitutes extreme weather, the days I refer to had temperatures well below the guidelines set by the Severe Weather Shelter Network, which provides overnight housing and meals for people experiencing homelessness when the temperature drops below 20 if there's no active snow and below 32 when there is snow. This housing begins at 7:00 PM, and the guests are required to leave the shelter at 7:00 AM. On December 22nd of 2022, there was a low of minus 24 and a high of minus 6. This was the second coldest day in Denver weather history. At present, there is no countywide plan to deal with homeless people during extreme weather events, which I will personally describe as weather during which no human being should be unhoused, whether it's during the day or night. After last December, the county came up with a blueprint for extreme weather, but this blueprint only specified the needs, not a plan for addressing those needs. I had the privilege of attending an open house for Recovery Works, a new housing navigation center in Lakewood. Currently at that site, there are no shelter beds, but it's my understanding that during extreme weather, that center will be open. There are also two churches in Lakewood and one in Evergreen that are part of the Severe Weather Shelter Network. Most homeless people do not have transportation and rely on buses to get to shelters. My concern is that during an extreme weather event, there is currently no countywide plan for notifying unhoused people where to go and how to get there, especially if RTD is not operating, as happened last year. Mr. Goff told me that Wheat Ridge did offer motel vouchers during the last extreme weather event, and I'm saying possibly the Wheat Ridge Rec Center could also be open during extreme weather if there's an overflow from the Severe Weather Shelter Network. So, what I'm proposing is that the City Council make a plan in advance of any upcoming extreme weather, so that as soon as extreme weather is predicted, a plan is in place to notify people where to go for shelter and a plan for transporting them if the buses are not running. This advanced planning may save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one speaker that signed up to speak. Joining us online is Shelley Williams. If you would please unmute and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes to address the council. Let's see if Ms. Williams is here.
Unmute, okay. Sorry, I couldn't figure out the unmute.
Okay.
I just wanted to address the City Council on the issue of speeding motorists between Wadsworth and Sheridan on 32nd Avenue. I live at 7380 West 32nd Avenue, and we have recently lost two of our beloved pets, two cars that have hit them out in front of our house. And while I realize, you know, that's the danger that pet owners take when they let their animals outside, also the rate of speed that these cars are going in front of our house is ridiculous. Like, I don't know, there's a, the stoplight is not too far from our house, so I don't understand why they're going so fast, but, I mean, I've taken video, and my kids have noticed. I mean, it, there's, it's not a well-lit area there to begin with, but the rate of speed that these cars are going right there, I don't understand. And there's no, there hasn't been any sort of, like, one of those speed machines that I've noticed in other areas out town. There's never been one of those sat there. It doesn't seem like anyone gets pulled over for speeding on this road, and I'm just wondering if there's, if this has been brought to the city's attention before, or if we could get something done about it, because it's, it's very dangerous, not only for pets, but for the bicyclists and pedestrians that go along that road. I'm surprised there hasn't been a lot more accidents. And so, I just wanted to bring that up because I believe it's a big safety concern.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Williams. We appreciate you joining us tonight. That's all of the speakers I have signed up to speak, so we will go to our consent agenda. Item number one, Ms. Hoppy, Councilwoman Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I introduce the consent agenda, I'd like to ask for consensus to consider item 1A separately from the rest of the consent agenda.
No objections, so noted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda item 1B, motion to extend the contract for professional services with AECom Technical Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $1,844,909 in approving subsequent payments for the ongoing program management services for the Investing for the Future Program. At issue on January 27, 2017, the firm AECom Technical Services, Inc. was selected through the city's procurement process to provide multi-year professional engineering and land use planning services for the 2E Bond Fund Investing for the Future projects and to serve as extension of staff as needed for review and assistance in the delivery of private development projects in the Clear Creek Crossing and Wheat Ridge Ward Road station areas, as well as construction management for the improved Wadsworth project. The scope and related fees for AECom services for 2024 have been negotiated and are presented in this memo. City Council action is required for the approval of the AECom Contract Amendment and Extension. Consent agenda item 1C, Resolution Number 54-2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $90,000 for the purpose of funding the Anderson Building boiler replacement. On occasion, it is necessary to adjust the current year's budget in order to account for unanticipated expenditures. In late August, the boiler at the Anderson Building failed. This unit is estimated to be 20 to 25 years old. It needs to be completely replaced. The city's insurance will provide for the replacement cost less the deductible. This is an unanticipated expense, and it is required that the City Council authorizes this increase to the city's budget by resolution. Consent agenda item 1D, motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments of $106,713 to Progressive Commercial Aquatics for the pipe and skimmer leak repairs at the Anderson Pool. At issue, the leisure pool at Anderson Park has encountered numerous pipe leaks and require immediate repair to safeguard the facility's integrity and allow us to continue offering outdoor aquatics to the Wheat Ridge community. This motion is to award a contract to Progressive Commercial Aquatics to complete this essential work.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion on consent agenda item number 1B, 1C, and 1D?
I move to approve consent agenda items 1B through D. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council? Thank you, and you are catching our councillor online also. So, we have tallied that vote. Thank you, Councilor Hulteen. Councilwoman Hoppy, may I have a motion on, or a motion on agenda item number 1A?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to adopt the 2024 City Council meeting calendar. At issue, the calendar of City Council meeting is adopted by motion. The City Council annually adopting the meeting calendar for the year is more efficient, enables mayor, council, and staff to schedule other events and travel in advance. The council will be able to amend the calendar by motion throughout the year if necessary. I move to adopt the 20, oh, I move to adopt the 2024 City Council meeting calendar as presented with the following change to cancel the December 23, 2024 regular business meeting the two days before Christmas.
Second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Which one of these are we moving here, December 24th? So, we're including that one with, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that it'd be prudent of us to cancel this meeting two days before Christmas. There are two other meetings that could potentially need to be canceled depending on council attendance. Those are both in March, and I believe that Mayor Potem will be keeping, Mayor Potem Stites will be keeping a close eye on those as they get closer. I don't see any need to cancel those at this time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Wait a minute, did we have a motion on that?
I motioned.
Okay, and who is the second? Okay. Motion carries unanimously with Mr. Hulteen. Okay, and we recorded our online councilwoman. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. We will now go to agenda item number two. Councilor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 29-2023, an ordinance approving the rezoning of properties located at 3650 and 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard from restricted commercial RC and neighborhood commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood case number WC-2308. At issue, Bat Cave LLC is requesting approval of a zone change from restricted commercial RC to neighborhood commercial NC and neighborhood commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN for the properties at 3650 and 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change will result in one zoning across both parcels, will provide a continuation of the mixed-use neighborhood zoning from the east, and reflects both the transitional nature of this location and the character of the Wadsworth corridor.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. If you intend to speak on this item, then by doing so, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Director Miculak, do we have a staff report?
We do have a staff report. We've got Alina Olivas Loera here to make the staff report, and we also have some comments by City Attorney Dahl before we begin.
Okay. Mr. Dahl.
Thank, thank you very much. As council will recall, the last time that we met, one of the items was a rezoning that Councilmember Larson had participated on as a planning commission member, and we needed to correct the record and make the record clear that he was able to participate tonight. You have a charter section, of course, that requires members of the council to vote on every matter except if excused by a majority of the remaining members of the council. Because Councilmember Larson actually had to act on this as a planning commission member, the issue is whether he's able now to act impartially since he's already voted on it once. And we went through an exercise last time in creating a record that would enable Councilmember Larson to participate. So, procedurally, and I looked at the minutes from the last hearing, procedurally, how we would do this would be a motion from the council to not excuse Councilmember Larson on this matter, and if that motion passes, he'll be required to vote, and before he does, and before we proceed further, then I'll have a couple of questions for him to establish that he can act impartially.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize that Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to not excuse Councilmember Larson from voting on this item.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I would just like to bring up that Planning Commission materially looks at things differently than City Council does, and we have in the past asked, we have two other members on council that were also on planning before they were on council, and this is the procedure that we have followed with those other members and keeping with our, with our historical process, I would like to, is why I made this motion tonight.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? And we have our online vote also. Thank you, Councilor Hulteen. So, we are going to compel Mr. Larson to vote on this matter. Do you have further instructions for us, Mr. Dahl?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Just a few questions for Councilmember Larson to make a record. Councilmember Larson, it is true, correct, that you participated as a planning commission member when this rezoning application was in front of the planning commission, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and you voted on the matter at that time?
Yes, I did.
And do you understand that tonight's hearing is a new hearing whereby the applicant will present their case to the city council, so it's a separate hearing?
Yes, I understand.
And can you confirm that you're able to take action in voting on this matter tonight based exclusively on the record that's made before the council tonight in this hearing, and that you can act impartially on the application?
Yes.
Very good. Councilmember Larson fully participates from here on out.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn it back to Director Miculak.
Thank you, and I think we are all queued up for our staff presentation.
Good evening. My name is Alina Olivas Loera, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ2308, which is a request for approval of a zone change from restricted commercial and neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood at 3650 and 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The properties within the City of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject properties are outlined in red. The properties are located on the east side of Wadsworth Boulevard between West 36th Place and West 38th Avenue. The area is primarily commercial to the north along Wadsworth and residential to the east and south. 3650 Wadsworth measures just under half an acre, and 3660 Wadsworth measures just over half an acre. This is a zoning map of the area. The subject properties are currently zoned RC and NC and are outlined in red. The site is adjacent to RC and R3 zoning to the north and south and adjacent to large swaths of MUC and MUN zoning to the east and west. Surrounding land uses include commercial, multi-unit residential, and a church. This is a view of the subject properties looking east from Wadsworth Boulevard. Both properties contain converted residential buildings currently used for offices. This is a view of 3660 looking north on Wadsworth. And this is a view of 3650 looking south on Wadsworth. The applicant initiated the rezone to allow for a wider range of uses and to align the property zoning with the city's comprehensive plan and zoning with other adjacent properties nearby and on the corridor. Should the zone change be approved, there are currently no plans for redevelopment of the properties. The RC and NC zone districts allow for a limited range of commercial land uses, which include office, general business, and retail sales and service establishments. By contrast, MUN zoning allows for residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two, and the permitted retail uses are greater in number. The MUN designation would allow more flexibility for revitalization of the site and will provide standards for any future redevelopment. The MUN district is complementary to the context of the corridor and the surrounding zoning and land uses, and provides a wider range of allowed uses than the existing RC and NC zoning. This table summarizes the current and proposed zoning's development standards. Most of the proposed zoning development standards would apply if the properties redeveloped in the future. Most notable differences between the three zone districts include permitted uses, building height, setback requirements, and build-to requirements. The design standards in MUN are strict and include architectural standards, open space requirements, setbacks, and parking requirements. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 18, 2023, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. No one from the public attended the meeting. Because Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the properties were posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners and occupants within a 600-foot radius. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on November 2, 2023. Staff received no comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge speaks prior to this hearing. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan and any other applicable plans. Staff believes that the proposed MUN zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comp plan. The properties are identified as a neighborhood buffer area and are along a primary commercial corridor within the structure plan. A designation used for existing commercial areas and which calls for the promotion of reinvestment in properties and the promotion of a mix of neighborhood-supporting uses, including residential use and office use. The mixed-use neighborhood zoning designation is appropriate for the subject properties by enabling the possibility of future redevelopment, which aligns with the city's adopted goals and policies. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons: Based on the character and land use patterns of the area, the MUN zone district is more appropriate than RC and NC in terms of allowed uses for the properties. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect. Staff finds a zone change to MUN is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the vision for high-quality architecture and design, the revitalization of existing neighborhoods, and reinvestment in aging commercial properties. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the properties and by aligning the zoning with the city's mixed-use goals for this corridor. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite members of the public to speak at public hearings. I have no one signed up either in person here in council chambers or online, so we will move beyond our public comment on this item and open this up to questions from council of staff. Are there any questions from council of staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this item? There are none. I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hoppy, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number 2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 29-2023, An Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of Properties Located at 3650 and 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard from Restricted Commercial and Neighborhood Commercial to Mixed Use Neighborhood. On second reading, order published, and it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? I don't see any hands raised, so would the clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number 3. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Council Bill Number 30-2023, An Ordinance Amending Section 2-33 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Community Service Officer Code Enforcement Powers. In an effort to bring greater compliance to the city's licensing programs, a new compliance officer position is being created through a vacancy on the Community Service Officers' Team, CSOs. This position will focus on licensing compliance rather than typical CSO duties. In order to meet the objective of ensuring compliance with licensing programs, the city's Code of Laws needs to be amended to expand the scope of city employees that are able to issue municipal court summons, including Chapter 11 licensing violations. Furthermore, the code should also reflect that compliance officers shall be designated as peace officers akin to a CSO.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Director Miculak, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do have a couple of comments from City Attorney Dahl.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much. I promised the chief that I'd make the presentation tonight. He and I flipped for it, and I lost. No, I told him that after he did his work here, he could leave, and I'm on deck to do this. As noted in the description of the issue, the city really has found a need to have a specific officer that's available to deal with these kinds of licensing issues, because the city really is increasingly involved in licensing matters. Short-term rentals is a really good example of a licensing arena that has grown up considerably, and now the city has to deal with. Hotel licensing is in the same category, home occupations. These are all things that require this position. We've graded this position. Importantly, we need to not only create the position and recognize it in this ordinance, but you'll notice that the ordinance also lists the code chapters that the compliance officers have authority to issue summons in, for example, and this ordinance adds Chapter 11, and that's important because Chapter 11 is the chapter on licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations. Previous to this ordinance being adopted, the CSOs didn't have authority to write summonses and to pursue that enforcement, and instead, that was left to other staff in the Administrative Services Department, and honestly, they're pretty well booked otherwise, so this is really a tool that I think would be very helpful to ensure that the city's business licensing requirements are complied with. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, we invite the public to speak on issues at council, and this would be that time. I have no one signed up either in person or online, so we will complete our public's right to speak and go to questions from council. Any questions from council before we ask for a motion? I see none, so Counselor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 30-2023, An Ordinance Amending Section 2-33 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Community Service Officer Enforcement Powers on second reading.
Second.
Order it published, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much, and we have recorded our online vote from our online counselor tonight. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 4. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 31-2023, An Ordinance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Clear Creek Drive of Public Roadway. At issue, Clear Creek Drive is currently under construction to extend the roadway approximately 500 feet to the northwest. As part of this extension, the existing cul-de-sac bulb was demolished and reconstructed. City staff has determined that the sidewalk easements at the previous cul-de-sac location are no longer necessary, and they will be vacated by this ordinance.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. Director Miculak, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Just a couple more comments from me, a little bit of background. Clear Creek Drive was actually originally dedicated maybe over 15 years ago, and we have the right-of-way across the creek into the north side of the creek, all the way to Highway 58. So the road that you see today was only built in a portion of the right-of-way. We knew it would have to terminate south of the creek when we built that as a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac by design, because of the diameter, is usually a little wider than the right-of-way width of a sort of normal street, if you will. We knew that that cul-de-sac bulb could be temporary, so we built that extra width in an easement, knowing at some point we would get to today and be ready to vacate that extra width. Fast forward to the second phase of apartments that you see being constructed. Those weren't originally conceived when we were approving Clear Creek Crossing. That came later, and so that has required that Clear Creek Drive be extended, not over the creek, but just a little bit further north. And so that's where we are today with sort of the original design, as we intended needing to be vacated through that small little easement on the wings, if you will, of the cul-de-sac bulb.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, we typically invite the public to speak on these issues. I have no one signed up to speak, so we will conclude that part and go to questions from council of staff. Seeing none, we will... Let's see, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 31-2023, An Ordinance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Clear Creek Drive of Public Roadway on second reading, order published, and that it takes effect immediately after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you, and we have recorded our online vote from our online counselor tonight. Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 5. Counselor Dozeman, may I have an introduction on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 32-2023, An Ordinance Vacating Any Right-of-Way Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Miller Court. At issue, a portion of right-of-way near Miller Court and West 37th Place has been deemed to be unnecessary by the Community Development Department. This portion of right-of-way is not built or used as a roadway and is proposed to be vacated.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I am going to open the public hearing, and Director Miculak, do we have a staff report on this item?
Just a couple more comments by way of background. This one's a little bit different than the last item. So in a few locations along Lena Gulch, you may recall, over the years, we have had to do some right-of-way cleanup where the right-of-way and existing conditions don't align. In this case, Miller Court was originally dedicated to the city in 1955. Since then, we've built the roads where we need them, and in the 80s, 1980s, Lena Gulch was narrowed and channelized, and it appears that at the same time, in the 1980s, we were supposed to have vacated the right-of-way. We can't figure out why that didn't happen, but we learned of it in the last year or so when the current property owner purchased the lot to the north and approached staff with a few questions, so the ordinance before you tonight fulfills that original intent. There's a curb, if you've looked at the site plan or driven by, there's a curb on the north side of Lena Gulch. That will essentially be the dividing line between private property and the right-of-way, and the city will retain an easement to provide necessary access should we need to maintain Lena Gulch.
Thank you very much. Normally, we invite the public to speak on these public hearings by registration. I have no one registered to speak on this, so we will conclude our public's right to speak on this and go to questions from council of staff. Before I close the public hearing, are there any questions from council or staff? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Dozeman, a motion is in order on this item.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 32-2023, An Ordinance Vacating Any Right-of-Way Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Miller Court. On second reading, order it published, and that it takes effect immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now do move to Agenda Item Number 6. Mayor Protem Stites, may I have... Would you introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 33-2023, An Ordinance Amending Section 11-52.5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Membership of the Wheat Ridge Liquor Licensing Authority. At issue, City Council amended the city's Boards and Commissions Code to create new regulations pertaining to term limits, excused absences, automatic removal, approximately equal district representation of board members, and council's ability to remove members, among other things. While certain provisions extend to the Liquor Licensing Authority, LLA, amendments concerning term limits, district representation, and council's approval/ removal authority do not apply to the LLA. This ordinance will amend the code to extend these provisions of the Boards and Commissions Code and amendments to Liquor Licensing Authority.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 33-2023, An Ordinance Amending Section 11-52.5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Membership of the Wheat Ridge Liquor Licensing Authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 7. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to... Excuse me, I'd like to introduce... Sorry, hold on a second. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to CZB LLC in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for professional services for the comprehensive plan update. At issue, the city has determined it is time to update the comprehensive plan. Funds were previously budgeted for this update, and the city is seeking consultant services to complete this plan update for a total cost not to exceed $400,000. On October 30, 2023, the firm CZB was selected by the city's established procurement process to perform the required professional services for completion of the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. Director Miculak, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, yes. I'm excited to introduce to you our senior planner, Ellis Stevie, who joined our staff a couple of months ago. He's a Wheat Ridge resident and will be managing the city plan update for us. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Ellis Stevie, Senior Neighborhood Planner. It is great to be here. So I will be the project manager for the city plan. As you may have seen in your council action form, this is the update to the comprehensive plan that we're calling the city plan, to make it a little more accessible to the public. So I'm really excited about this plan. We're hoping to get a lot of people engaged. Our What's Up Wheat Ridge site is currently up and active, so I urge all of you, and those of you who are listening from home, to please check out the site, whatsupwetridge.com/city-plan. So there you can visit it. You can sign up for project emails. So that's the best way to be the first to know about what's going on with the plan, and especially how to get involved and how to share your voice. So assuming everything moves forward tonight, we... Our team will be convening in January. We're aiming for a public kickoff in the spring with a big push leading up to that to get the word out to people. The full project is on a 15-month timeline, and throughout that, you may have seen in the scope, we'll have three different check-ins with council, in addition to obviously the final adoption. So I really look forward to working with all of you on this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Stevie. We invite the public to speak on these items. I have no one signed up to speak, so we will close that portion and go for any questions from council at this time. Mayor Pro... Oh, okay. I'll go first to Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm very excited about this. It's just a small, minor question, but are we going to actually register a dedicated URL for it? It was long to hear you like spell out the entire URL that's in the Wheat Ridge... What's Up Wheat Ridge, so I'm just curious if there's a plan to create an easier URL for a community to engage with?
Not currently, but that is something that we can look into. I definitely... This is, as I was kind of thinking about what I wanted to talk about, this is definitely the most awkward forum to share that. It's going to be a lot easier when we're doing emails. People can just click on it, and we also do have a QR code, so we're hoping to make that easier. I know it's hard for people to type along and get that in time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, Counselor Hulteen, may we have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to CZB LLC in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars for professional services for the city plan update.
Second.
Pardon me, we have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number eight. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to approve installation of traffic calming devices on Estes Street from Thirty-Fifth Avenue to Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and Lamar Street from Twenty-Sixth Avenue to Twenty-Ninth Avenue, in accordance with the requirements of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. At issue, in early twenty twenty-three, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan underwent modifications aimed at streamlining processes, improving accessibility for residents, setting eligibility requirements, and establishing a formal annual project timeline. Out of the seven segments enrolled in the twenty twenty-three NTMP, four were deemed eligible for speed humps based on program criteria. Of those, two segments, Estes Street and Lamar Street, met the fifty percent resident approval requirement necessary for the NTMP. These two projects will be constructed in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. Do we have a staff presentation on this item? Director Miculak?
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of additional comments. We last talked to you about the NTMP in May, and I will say that at the first sort of, our first take is that the revised program is going smoothly, both for staff and for residents, which we're happy to report. You saw on the second page of the staff report, sort of the itemization of the outcome of each of our seven segments. The two that were eligible from a traffic analysis standpoint but didn't meet our resident signature threshold, just a reminder, we actually dropped that from eighty percent before to fifty percent, so we feel okay. And it wasn't such an extreme traffic issue that we feel like we need to intervene, regardless of resident support. We have the authority to do that, obviously. So, the two segments moving forward, we'll each get two speed humps. They'll be part of the annual construction program next summer. We've got sufficient budget for those improvements already in the approved twenty twenty-four budget. And then, we have on the Zoom, Jordan Jeffries, if we've got any very specific technical questions. He did the analysis for this. And I also just want to plug that next year will be our first sort of full year of the new program, so we will enroll new segments from January through the end of March, and we'll make sure we get that sort of out very broadly to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, we normally invite the public to speak on this. No one has come forward to sign up and speak, so we will move past our public comment area and go to questions from council. Are there any questions on council on this? Before I have one, Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am excited that we've updated the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, and definitely lowering from eighty to fifty percent is a better threshold. Looking at the Miller Street from Forty-Fourth to Forty-Eighth Avenue, what are the considerations we have for the fact that there's two schools along that and a park? Are we giving special considerations for destinations like that that are, you know, we've got kids that are walking to schools and parks?
We do. I'll fill the time, Jordan. Oh, I see you just unmuted. Jordan Jeffries is one of our civil engineers that's here. You want to take a first cut?
Good evening. So, Miller Street definitely has a lot of stuff going on with schools, and had about a five mile per hour overage above the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which does indicate a minor speeding problem. Ultimately, we felt like speed humps probably aren't the right solution there. If you look at Miller Street, the section is kind of odd right now with a very large parking lane. So, I think we'd prefer to address this issue holistically and take an approach, maybe as a city project, and reexamine the section, and see if we could accomplish some traffic calming via that method rather than putting in speed humps.
Great. Thanks. I think, yeah, so with moving it from the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program into a city project, what would be the process and timeline for that consideration?
We haven't looked at the budget and schedule for that yet. It's probably something that we will raise this year to see if we can get into possibly the twenty-five budget.
Okay, thanks. I guess I'd just like to register, that seems like a priority. As long as I've lived in the city, that there's just been a lot of concerns, and we've had incidents principally on Forty-Fourth, but there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there, and there's no infrastructure. So, I'd like to just make a register that that seems like a priority project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff on this? Hearing none. Counselor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve installation of traffic calming devices on Estes Street from Thirty-Fifth Avenue to Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and Lamar Street from Twenty-Sixth Avenue to Twenty-Ninth Avenue, in accordance with the requirements of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. This brings us to agenda item number nine. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This is resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-two-three, a resolution approving a trail maintenance agreement with the Sisters of Charity of Leavenworth Health System, Inc., otherwise known as SCL. At issue, the Sisters of Charity of Leavenworth Health System, Inc., or SCL Health, is constructing a trail on the east side of the hospital at Clear Creek Crossing. This agreement outlines the responsibilities of the cities of the city of Wheat Ridge and SCL Health as it pertains to trail maintenance.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Director Miculak, do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, our Parks and Recreation Director, Karen O'Donnell, has a couple of comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to provide a little bit more information. So, SCL Health is currently constructing the trail connection on the east side, as mentioned, of their new hospital site, and that trail goes north and south and connects from Fortieth to Clear Creek Trail. It's Exhibit One in the agreement, if you want to see a larger picture of what that looks like. And this is essentially an agreement that's designed to outline the trail maintenance responsibilities, and details that the city will be responsible for routine and preventive maintenance. So, that essentially is our snow removal, spraying for weeds, maintaining the crusher fines, maintaining signage, but anything that is a long-term, larger repair, that would be the responsibility of SCL Health. And if there's any potential relocation, should C.D.O. ever need that portion of the right-of-way, that is also SCL Health's responsibility.
Okay. Thank you, Director O'Donnell. We would normally go to a public comment. We have no one signed up to speak on this. We will conclude our public comment and go to questions from council of staff. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is just a resolution, and there's no monies being exchanged, but I just do want to put on record that SCL Health now, Intermountain Health, is my employer, so I'm not sure if we need to do anything in regards to...
Sorry, I couldn't hear the last part of that.
I think this is a question for our attorney.
Doctor, oh, doctor. Oh, Mr. Dahl.
Just, I appreciate Councilmember Dozeman raising this. Let's just do a couple of quick questions, as we often do. It's correct that you are employed by SCL Health, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And they're one of the parties to this agreement. However, it's also correct that under this agreement, there's no funds that would go to you personally. Is that true?
That is true.
Great. And are you, do your duties at all involve the administration of this agreement?
No.
Very good. There's no conflict, and she continues to vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your question. Any further questions before we go to a motion? Seeing none, Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may. And thank you, Counselor Dozeman, for bringing that up. I move to approve Resolution number fifty-five twenty-two-three, a resolution approving a trail maintenance agreement with Sisters of Charity of Leavenworth Health System, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. This brings us to agenda item number ten. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-two-three, a resolution amending the twenty twenty-three fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars for the purpose of accepting donations to fund the Wish for Wheels event. At issue, the city partnered with the nonprofit Wish for Wheels to facilitate a bike build at Stevens Elementary for the entire second-grade class. To cover the cost of the event, donations were made by the Architerra Group, ECI Construction Management, and Lutheran Medical Center. This budget supplemental will allow the city to cover this unbudgeted expense.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Director Miculak, do we have any further information on this item?
I will defer again to Director O'Donnell.
Director O'Donnell.
I don't have anything to add other than thank you, Council, for your support.
Okay. Thank you very much. We always invite the public to speak on these items. I have no one signed up to speak, so we'll move past that and go to questions from council. Is there questions from council? Seeing none, may I have a motion on this item? Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-two-three, a resolution amending the twenty twenty-three fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars for the purpose of accepting donations to fund the Wish for Wheels event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. That concludes our action items. We will now go to city staff. City managers matters. Our managers not available tonight, but we'll go to Director Miculak. Anything on the city side?
Yes, just a reminder that this is actually our last meeting until the New Year, so happy holidays to everybody. And then, I will maybe just take a moment to respond to one of the public comments we heard at the very beginning from Ms. Robinson. I believe council has received an email with some of the actions and plans related to our severe weather response, and our staff will continue to work with Jefferson County and Lakewood and our neighbors on what we call extreme weather, the sort of difference of the two. Just wanted to make that known, and we can also get that information to Ms. Robinson.
Thank you very much. City attorneys matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, we will go to elected officials matters, and we will start with Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and be safe out there, if you can find it, in Wheat Ridge. Shop Wheat Ridge. You know, Forty-Fourth Avenue has a lot of wonderful businesses, including, now I'm blanking, Swiss Flower, I'm so sorry. And her shop is amazing. I go in there, and it's just an abundance of options, and that also Four Seasons, the Four Seasons Holiday Market on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So, we have a lot of wonderful places to buy stocking stuffers, if you haven't done that already, so please do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one really cool event coming up this week I wanted to share with everyone. The Senior Resource Center has acquired a tri-shaw, which is an electric bicycle that has a seat in the front of it that they are using for their adult day program, to take residents out into the community just for, to get some air and enjoy the community. And they're having an open house this Thursday from three to five-thirty, and so I just encourage everyone to come over. It's at the Old Firehouse on DePue, there, Thirty-two, Thirty-two DePue. But it's a really, it's a wonderful thing that they are, they're, they have, they're using now for their adult day program, but they're hoping to program it out further for the residents in our community, and so if you'd like to know more, just come over and check it out.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to go now to Counselor Hulteen, joining us online.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry I'm not there with everyone tonight, especially with all of the people that were being celebrated at the beginning of the meeting. Just a quick Happiness Gardens update. I think this is the last week with the goats there, and there's been a lot of goat shenanigans. So, if you haven't had a chance to go see the goats, they're there for a couple more days. And then, I just wanted to make a comment. We heard from a resident who was really calling out the speeding on Thirty-second Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth, and, you know, that, that road is just really wide, and there's very few stops along it. And so, it's the classic example of, you know, it doesn't matter what speed limit you set there, it is a really comfortable road for you to go about as fast as you feel comfortable doing, which on that road is pretty fast. So, I think that's an example of a road where we might want to be taking a look at, you know, what are things we can do with that road to naturally slow the traffic down? A lot of the jurisdictions around us are doing traffic calming activities like that, and Thirty-second Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth is a great example of that. And with that, I just wish everybody a very happy, peaceful holiday and New Year, and I will look forward to rejoining you in person in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to add that I was so impressed by the recognitions and the commendations this evening. It really reinforces for me what a great place Wheat Ridge is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, I attended with the mayor and Councilmember Larson, and Parks and Director O'Donnell, the Anderson Park, our new playground, which is really exciting. I know there's a lot of snow, and I'm looking forward to seeing when the snow is gone and grass is, you know, around us, and the kids are taking advantage of that playground, going on the slides. I tried my best to try to sweep it off, but there really wasn't very many kids that were going to be there. Couple, but thank you for those that did bring them. And also, Councilmember Stites was there, and I don't know if his one got one of the slides, but I tried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Hulteen, for talking about the goats. They will be there for a few, well, until Wednesday, but if you'd like to come out bright and early, we will be taking the goats back to Five Fridges, and they love a good send-off. And I just want to thank District Two for accommodating Willie Nelson and the crew. And what that reminds me is, I know this is a very special time of year, but for me, it's the best time of year, because when we come back, it's Stock Show, everybody. So, best sixteen days in January, I will be volunteering there this year, as no surprise, a hospitality host. So, I am going to just send an invite out to everyone in Wheat Ridge. If you have not been to the Stock Show, please send me an email and meet me at the Stock Show, so I can show you some of the best of the West. It's such a good time. You don't have to know anything about the Stock Show. Please come. And I'm just going to keep convincing them that we need to do it in Jefferson County at some point, so, so, yeah. So, after these lovely holidays, don't forget, best sixteen days in January.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe if we build it, they will come. Just saying. I just, I want to say happy holidays to everybody. The holidays have started for some, and will continue on until after New Year, and I hope everybody has an amazing time with their friends and their family and their loved ones. I also wanted to say, you know, our high school, Wheat Ridge High School, has really, they have really been doing some good work over there in the last couple of years, and it really shows when we have so many student athletes and so many awards that they have earned, because it is very hard, like Coach Nate was saying, it is very hard when you go as a head coach and you sit down at the table with all the other head coaches, and you're basically arm wrestling to get your All States and All Conferences for your kids. And for the number that we had on that soccer team is just really amazing and super awesome. I am so absolutely proud of my daughter and her best friend, Kaylee, as the head coaches for the Palms team, to be able to be here when they brought home the first state title as dancers on that team, and then now full circle for them to be coaches to bring back to be coaches to bring back that title. It's just really amazing. So congratulations to all our students. Thank you to, uh, Principal Mahana, Mahana and, um, A.D. Campbell for, um, helping me bring our students in to be able to be celebrated.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I'll, I'll echo Counselor Hoppy's, uh, sentiments there as a, I was gonna say as a former farmer, but once a farmer, always a farmer. So, um, as a farmer myself, I'm, I'm excited to see, uh, Wheat Ridge High School, um, kind of getting back up to the glory days and, and, uh, seeing so many league and state, uh, champions there and, uh, so many student athletes that are not only athletes, but they're students too, and, and they're doing a phenomenal job. So that's really cool to see. And, uh, Principal Mahana there is doing a fantastic job. Um, I've gotten to meet with her a few times over the last year, and I'm really impressed with, uh, the program that she's bringing to Wheat Ridge High School, and, and all of her staff and her coaches are doing a phenomenal job there. So, um, thank you to Wheat Ridge High School and, and all that they're doing for our community. They're really stepping up. Um, I also want to thank our seven brand-new officers. Uh, it was really cool to, to meet those gentlemen tonight, and, and it's one of the coolest traditions that, uh, Chief Martha's brought in, is, is bringing the new officers in to introduce themselves and, um, get to, get to meet us and us get to meet, meet them. And we see them, um, kind of as our, our bailiffs or, or whatever you want to call them in here in the evenings on, on Mondays, but, uh, you know, we see them out in the community. They do a phenomenal job for us, so we really, really, really appreciate them. Um, and I also want to thank the graduates from Wheat Ridge One-O-Two, who, uh, graduated Wheat Ridge One-O-One, did all that work, and then came back, did a phenomenal presentation last week. Um, I think we, we all really enjoyed their hard work and, and, uh, what they, what they do for our community. So thank you to everybody who participated in that. Um, as Counselor Ohm said, uh, Saturday was a blast down at Anderson Park. I think my son Brandon was the first official kid. There's probably other kids on there, but he was the first official kid to get to play on the playground, so he was pretty excited. He was fighting with the, the rooster for, uh, for playground time and to be able to get down, go down the slide there, so that was pretty cool. Um, so thank you, Director O'Donnell, for all your hard work, and, um, that playground is gonna be really cool for the kids to, to get to play on. It's, uh, it's unique and, and really stands out. Um, as we get into holidays, uh, there's tons of businesses in Wheat Ridge. I know Local Works is about to do their drawing for the Shop Local, Shop Wadsworth event. Um, so this week, pay attention to Local Works because they're gonna be announcing all the winners for that. So hopefully, everybody's gone out and, uh, ate and shopped on Wadsworth, but, um, we only have a few more days till Christmas, so get out and get anything you can in Wheat Ridge. We have tons of places. You can get whatever you want. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, we're winding up our meeting. This is our last meeting of the year. I want to congratulate, and, uh, all of the graduates of Wheat Ridge One-O-Two. Uh, thank you for being, uh, in the program. Thank you for being in the city, and thank you for your willingness to, to learn and to serve our city. Uh, I want to echo Mayor Protem's, uh, congratulations and thank you to our police recruits. We appreciate your service in our city. We appreciate you being here. Uh, thank you and be safe. Um, I want to congratulate the, the boys soccer team and the, and the Wheat Ridge Dance Team. Boy, what a, what a wonderful thing to be able to bring these great, great young, young men and women into our chambers, uh, doing great work, not only on the, on the field and, uh, but also in the classroom. These student athletes are really a, a pleasure. I had a wonderful coffee with the mayor last Saturday, and I want to thank everyone who joined me. We had some really stimulating conversation about some of the issues that have surfaced lately in our community, and I really appreciate your thoughtful, uh, your thoughtful comments and your, your suggestions and your, uh, ability to, to talk and listen in our community. It's very, very helpful and very beneficial. Uh, to the, uh, to the lady that's, that came in and spoke about the, the, uh, speeding on Thirty-second Avenue between Wadsworth and Pierce, I want to also, uh, e- e- echo her, uh, her concerns. And in that, uh, in that, uh, portion of the highway going westbound, we have barrels out there, uh, on, uh, temporary traffic because we've got some, uh, some work going on there. So please, as you drive around our city, please be careful, drive slowly and carefully. We have, we have kids out of school. We have lots of people walking and exercising, and we want everybody to make it home safely at night. Um, we, I want to, uh, mention that we have a, uh, community discussion going about waste hauling and what you think waste hauling should look like in our community in the future. And there is a meeting this Wednesday at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, uh, from four to six PM. So Wednesday, the thirteenth, four to six PM. Go, uh, listen to what's going on and participate in the discussion and be part of the, uh, part of the solutions that we, that we achieve. Uh, we had a great, uh, a great, uh, ribbon cutting at Anderson Park, thanks to Director O'Donnell and her team out there for making that happen and getting together on a beautiful snowy cold, but not too cold, Saturday morning, and it got a great enthusiasm there. Um, this is our last meeting of the year, so we will be here back in business on this, on January the eighth of two thousand twenty-four. How time flies. So I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Please be safe and, and, uh, and take care of your loved ones out there. And if there's no more business to come before our council, we will adjourn for the year. Thank you.